I'll the Board of Alderman meeting to order for the City of Warrenton on July 1, 2014. I, since we have some Boy Scouts here in the audience, I've asked Quinn to lead us in the pledge of allegiance if everyone would stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Quinn. Before I do the minutes, I wanted to lead an item on the agenda, item 11B, approval for Hickory Lake project. That's a large project for, for the City of Warrenton, and I would really like to have a full board present when we discuss that issue. So, we'll postpone that till, till the next board meeting. Item 3A, executive session minutes from June 3, 2014. Any changes, corrections?
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 3.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Holly, to approve the executive session minutes from June 3, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter is out. Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark is absent.
Motion carried four to zero with two absent. Item 3B, open an executive session minutes from emergency meeting on June 5, 2014.
Make a motion that we approve the open and executive session minutes from the emergency meeting on June 5, 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Holly, to approve the open and executive session minutes from emergency meeting on June 5, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absent. Item 3C, regular board meeting minutes from June 17, 2014.
I make a motion that we approve the regular board minute, meeting minutes from June 17, 2014.
Second.
That's, that's hard to say. Motion made by Alderman Holly, seconded by Alderman Dreyer, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from June 17, 2014. Roll call.
Alda Person Castily?
Abstain, I was absent.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion carried three to zero with one abstention and two absences. Item four, hearing from the public, and, and at this time, we ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and address the board, to come up to the podium, we ask that you limit your, your remarks to five minutes or less. So, if anyone would like to, uh, address the board, please do so at this time. Not hearing from the public, I'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Alderman, and we'll start with Alderman Dreyer.
I've got nothing.
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
No.
Nothing.
Okay, that's, that's good. We're zipping right along here.
Until we get to your list.
Well, I'm gonna be real, real brief. My remarks are short tonight. Uh, one, one thing I want to do is thank Melody for organizing and hosting the Ethics Meeting last week. Uh, I thought that went very well. We had, uh, my record show about 30 people showed up, uh, from different entities around the county and neighboring counties. Uh, a good, a very good seminar. The people from the State Ethics Commission were here, the two ladies that presented it, did a good job, gave us a lot of, uh, good information. Uh, I think Alderman Clark was able to attend, and Alderman Sluter and myself, so, uh, we had, had good representation. The other thing I was going to mention, if I can get my iPad to work. We received a thank you note from the Relay for Life people. Uh, the, the note reads, "City of Warrenton, we would like to say thank you for your support of Pink the Town Purple and helping us, uh, by putting the ribbons up, also for the dress down days, and help raise money for Relay for Life. Thank you." So, we, we appreciate the thank you note. The other thing I wanted to mention to the, uh, board, uh, and I put one of these in front of everybody's, uh, iPad, the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council's, uh, hosting a contributors' meeting July 10, 2014 at 7:00 PM, and it's at the Will Hileger Activity Building in Wright City. And I don't know if everybody knows where that's at, but it sits right there off the interstate at the park, when you first go into Wright City. So, everyone's welcome to attend. The other thing I was gonna share with the public, uh, the zoning request that we had at our last meeting to rezone a piece of property at the interest of Lake Chateau, uh, has been withdrawn, and cancellation of application for zoning change. Uh, this comes from Darrell Hicks' attorney, said, "It comes now Ted Hicks and Karen Hicks, by their attorney Darrell Hicks, and withdraws and cancels their application for a zoning change request for the above property, sincerely Darrell Hicks." We probably need to thank the Fellowship Baptist Church for stepping up and purchasing that property, uh, that kind of took, took the situation away from the board. Kind of a touchy situation for us, because we weren't sure which way the board was gonna go on it. Might, might have saved the, uh, city and the taxpayers, a great deal of money, and the church is very thrilled about having that piece of property, so. And that's all I have. I'm ready for... Chief, you wanna introduce your, your man?
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor, board, it's my pleasure to introduce you to our new police officer, who will be changing clothes later this week. Uh, he'll be starting on Friday, on the 4th. This is Anderson.
Welcome aboard, Andrew.
What a great day to start.
We were gonna ask about, we were gonna ask about that uniform.
I thought maybe you're gonna introduce the officer and the new uniforms at the same time.
Welcome aboard, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm on item eight. I'm, uh, I got on here Mr. Hardy's class project. Is Mr. Hardy here?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come forward and tell us what's going on?
First, I'd like to introduce two of the students that were integral part of the project. This is Traceen Neal, Trink McGee. They are eighth graders in my Industrial Technology Class at Blackhawk Middle School. Basically, what we did, uh, for our class project, it was a collaborative effort for every student in the class. We split the class up into four separate groups. Each group made a different section of the house. During the process, they had to learn to read blueprints, to figure out how to read blueprints, understand what the prints are, understand how to do the reading of the prints, and convert from a quarter inch scale to a one inch scale. This is built to a one inch scale. So, we talked about how to measure, how to do the math, how to do the conversions, how to use the tools. We have architect scales that they use, um, to convert from one size to the other. From that point, they had to learn from the scale size to do the actual exact size, so when they set up bandsaws and scroll saws, and jigs and fixtures to cut all the stuff out, they could measure accurately to the scale size to cut it for the project itself. Uh, so, during the course of it, they were given several obstacles they had to overcome. Number one, understanding and learning the terminology. What is a roof truss? What is a stud? What is a header for the doors and windows? What are stairs, uh, slopes, things like that? We did a lot of math, a lot of hands-on math, a lot of geometry, a lot of algebra, you know? Figured out, okay, center here, find the middle, go back out, da-da-da, do all those things, you know? Actually apply the stuff that they use in the other classes, and put it, you know, put it towards a common goal. Uh, couple of things, hold on just please, that we did, and if anybody would like to come look close, it's pretty impressive once we start taking it apart. Each group made a separate part, like I'd said. They had to follow the plans, and work separately in different areas. In order to have this whole thing fit, they had to be very precise, pay attention to all the details. So, when everything came together, it actually stacked on top of it, each other. Uh, so, they had to work together with each group within the total class. These were two of my group leaders. We'd meet at lunches all the time, in the mornings, after school, talk about what to do, and then they'd have to take that information and go back to the rest of the class and relay what needed to be done and how to do it. So, there's a lot of real practical application of onsite, you know, reality. They actually started out, everything started out with a piece of wood like this. We cut everything down to get what we have here. And, I would like to kind of lift this off, I'm, where you guys wanna get that upside here? Kind of show you some of the details. Now, if you look underneath here, you can see all the trusses, every one of these trusses was handmade. So, the kids had to come up with the drawings, and come up with all the, you know, layouts and the angles. They did informational reading, they had to do informational writing, you know? Find out, how am I gonna do this? So, I put the challenge to them, you know, to come up with the plan, you know, according to the size that the, that they needed. So, there's lots and lots and lots and lots of headwork, you know? Lots of scratching heads. So, this was one group. One group told side, off to the side, built that. Your group, he built the first floor, and, if we could grab that, we'll just tilt it forward. And if you wanna describe some of the things, maybe we'll come up here. You can see all the rooms, all the way out. We left some of the drywall off, so you can see some of the framework of the house.
You wanna tell them about the carpeting?
Carpeting was actually an idea I had, and it was from, you know, our basement. I brought it in, thinking it had to be cool added to the house, and had to look bigger than the house. So, I brought it in, we all cut it out, and, yeah, but I was actually pretty excited about laying it down in the house, so.
About the layout, what'd we, tell them about what you had to do first, as far as redriving?
For laying the house out, we actually had to get our measurements from an architect scale and break it down to a quarter inch. And, uh, once we broke that down, we actually had to use that board, and we cut it down to every room we needed to build. First, start off with floor joists, then we built your way up. But once we got the floor joists and the floor laid down, then that's when we started building our roofs to our house, to our house here, and then it all started coming together.
And like every other home site in construction, if you look underneath, you can see the, whoops, the floor joists. Got put in the wrong spot. So, we did a lot of problem solving as well. It's like, how are we gonna fix this? The whole doesn't line up. I said, "Well, think about it. What are you gonna have to do?" So, they figured out, they went ahead and had to reframe everything, close in what they had, recut everything out to get it to line back up. So, you know, like any other construction site, there's some manufacturing that had to take place, you know? So, we were able to do that, take care of that. So, this was another group, totally separate site. From there, set this up here. They did basement, they were in charge of the basement, foundation walls, and getting everything laid out, so everything stacked appropriately. We even have the I-beam simulated for the span to support the load. We talked about load-bearing walls, and how houses are configured to stack, spread the load, and all of that. So, this was another group. Fourth group we had, Mr. Traceen, and his group was in charge of all the windows and doors. And this is one of the interesting features of the house, that I put a challenge to them. You know, we, we tried this first semester, and just had stationary things in place, just kind of stuck there. This semester, I told them I wanna step it up a little bit. I want the garage door to open and close, I want the front door to open and close. There's a sliding glass door on the back, I said I want it to open and close. So, if you'd like to show them and tell them what you did to...
We had a fully functioning front door, and this took a, uh, no, paper clip, I cut it down, and made a drill bit out of it, and drilled into the wood, and then hot glued pegs into this, so it'd go into the wood and rotate.
So, we've got a, they actually put a doorstop on it, so it only goes one direction, and so you can open and close the front door. So, that was a pretty neat little challenge that they had, and it had to fit in tight spots, so we made that all work. And then, next feature?
Me and Mr. Hardy worked on this together, and we have a fully functioning garage door, it opens and closes. And we had to cut out the, the railings for it to slide in, and then I used the power sander to sand out pegs for the door, and I put two on each of the panels, and then cut out smaller panels for decoration, and I put it in a track. We glued it all together, and now it works.
What kind of wood is the dorm, uh, garage door?
It's spruce. Everything came from the spruce.
Oh, it's for even the door?
Even the doors, yes. The only thing we didn't cut out with the spruce was the, the foundation, simulated foundation. We used three-quarter inch plywood. And then for the roof, we used quarter inch Luon, another piece of plywood. We cut down the spruce to the scale size, but it just wasn't functionally sound enough. It curled and twisted on us, so we opted to, you know, go with the Luon plywood to put on there. And then, everybody was, there was a lot of frustration, a lot of kids going, you know, not sure what to do next, what am I doing? How am I doing this? I don't get it, I don't get it. But the first day, we put it all together, what happened?
Excited.
Lots of excitement. And there was, there was, there was dear-to-dear smiles afterward. We set the first floor on there, and it all lined up. We set the roof on there, and it all lined up. And every kid in that class was just excited as can be. It was, it was a really neat achievement for them, and, uh, you know, they just got more and more excited as time went on. You know, the closer they got, the more excited they got. That's how we got it painted, that's how we got a stained deck, that's how we got the shutters, that's how we got the painted roof. And, you know, other classes were actually getting involved. One of my seventh grade students thought that it needed a basketball net, so he handcrafted the, the hoop. He cut some wood very thin, so he could bend it to a ring. He actually took a hand file and made the basketball by hand, and would burned all the details into that. And, you know, so, other classes that I had, my sixth and seventh graders, were really excited and neat, 'cause they're like, "I get to do that? In time." You know, so they wanted to be part of it as well. And we have, you know, no fancy house can go without a fancy car, so we had one of the students donate a car to park in the garage. So, it was a really, really, really fun activity, very in-depth and detailed, lots of, lots of procedures. Yes, ma'am?
Um, to make it even more real for next semester, could we have them go through the permit process? To submit their, their plan and just do it as a simulation without...
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've talked, Mr. Hampton and I have talked about having the inspector, he and the inspector come in and inspect the process as we go, and maybe possibly do some field trips, actually get onsite. You know, one of the things that we did, part of the reason for this whole thing is our school motto this year, teaming up to build a better community. I figured, why not build a house? We'll get the teams and, you know, work together, you know, like a community would. And that's kind of why we tried to get in here, and we thank you very much for the opportunity to show off a little bit.
So, now what are you gonna do with it?
Good question. I would like, Mr. Hampton and I have talked about trying to display it for the public somewhere, so that they can see what, you know, we are doing in the school systems, and, you know, show, you know, these kids are, are going above and beyond what everybody thinks. So, we'd like to get it displayed somewhere in the community, to where everybody has the opportunity to come look at it, see what their children are actually doing in class other than sitting down, you know, in a chair, reading a book, or writing a paper. So, and actually, you know, learning how to work with their hands and think with their minds at the same time.
Did it take a full year?
Just nine weeks.
Nine weeks?
Nine weeks, start to...
So, you only have three days to do the permit? Just kidding.
So, so, yeah, you know, the kids work so hard, and they did so much.
That's pretty impressive.
And, yeah, I, I tried to make it as realistic as humanly possible. I come from a little bit of construction background, so we, we met often, and I have another eighth grade class that made the same house, and I had my group leaders from that class meet the group leaders from this class, share information, what they're doing, how they're getting to where they need to be, and kind of collaborate and work together in that way as well. So, they learned a lot about being in charge of other people, didn't you?
Yep.
Is it fun, or is it a little bit of work?
Oh, it's bold, yeah.
Oh, good answer.
Is the siding wood also?
Yes.
And how did you attach the siding?
Uh, we went, we used hot glue for that. It's just a little too thin, too many pieces to try to get little nails, so we just went through with hot glue. We made a, a little jig to where we can line everything up, so the siding would all be even all the way around the house. If you come around, feel free, come look, that's why it's here. You know, all the siding comes together on the corners, it's, you know, it's very, very well put together, very detail-oriented. It was a lot of fun, it was, it was exciting, it was really exciting, and we just wanted to take the opportunity to say, "Hey, we're, we're doing everything we can for our kids, and they're doing everything that they're being put to the challenge of, and they deserve a little recognition, and so, here we are."
Great, great project.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We thank you for coming and sharing that with us. Do you, you wanna leave it, or, I mean, you wanna disassemble it now and take it with you, or do you wanna leave it till after the meeting?
Uh, probably, we talked about maybe setting it off to the side and grabbing it in the morning, so everybody can just kind of go on about their business. That's okay.
All right, very good.
And then, anybody is feel free to come take a look, open and close the doors, so...
Break a door, yeah. Very nice, very impressive.
Thanks, thank you very much. Again, thanks for letting us...
Not an, not an issue.
You really should talk to the Historical Society, see if they would put it up down, down there, like they did the art projects for the kids. Be a nice place to display it for the community.
Or move it around in different, you know, different facilities and stuff like that.
Okay.
Some of the banks might wanna...
Yeah, that would be, that would be neat. We had talked about maybe trying to find some historical buildings in the community, and maybe kind of replicate those.
Yeah, that would be fun. You should do the show in your house, that'd be really fun.
Good spot, yeah, a good project.
But even, even, even the shingles were all handmade, wooden shingles.
Wooden shingles.
So, it was a lot of fun.
Great job.
A lot of work in, a lot of...
Yes, there are, yes, there is, yes, there was. So, again, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and sharing it with us.
Thank you. Why don't you guys just leave it there?
Well, those people can't see. They can barely get over by the door, it'd probably be done there.
We have...
Is it on wheels? Oh, it's on wheels, I didn't realize it was on wheels.
Yeah, it's on wheels. Yeah, that's great.
We okay blocking the door?
We, we can get out, believe me, if there's a fire, we'll get out.
Yeah.
We can't promise you the house will be like this.
All right, thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. I'm on item nine of the agenda, and the topic is Discussion of Amendment 7, Transportation Improvement, and we have our area engineer, Eric Menenga. And I'm seeing way too much of you here lately. It seems like we're at every meeting together.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm not sure if everybody got the handouts?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, so there were, what I wanted to do was just take a few minutes and talk about what, what is happening. On August 5th, Amendment 7 will be coming up to vote, and what that is, is a temporary three-quarter cent sales tax for 10 years for transportation. It would generate $540 million a year, or $5.4 billion over that 10-year period. Ninety percent of those revenues would go to MoDOT, 5% would go to cities, 5% would go to counties. Uh, the three-quarter cents sales, sales tax does not apply to food, the gasoline in Missouri, there won't be any fuel tax increases over that 10-year time period, and there won't be any toll roads in Missouri over that 10-year time period. So, that's, that's what the three-quarter cent sales tax is. What I really wanted to talk about tonight was the list of projects that were developed, uh, where the, where that funding would be used for. And we've been working with the Transportation Advisory Committee with Boonslick RPC. Our Northeast District, we have three RPCs, so we've worked together to come up with the list of projects, and I think you guys have all this, have this map. If not, I've got, I've got some extra copies. Okay. So, what I wanted to go through with you are what are the projects in, specifically in Warren County. With three-quarter cent sales tax, our Highway Commission said right off the top, we'll take $500 million off and expand I-70 to six lanes. It's gonna take more than $500 million, it's gonna take an additional billion, but we'll use our current future revenues and bond that, so for $1.5 billion, we'll expand I-70 to six lanes. And the way that project would work is we would put that out for design-build, which means that contractors on the design-build side will compete with, against each other. We'll tell them we have $1.5 billion, we wanna expand I-70 to six lanes, we don't wanna acquire any additional right-of-way, and we want as many interchanges improved as we can. So, through that competitive process and the innovations on the innovate, on the contracting side, a lot of times we see more for our, for our money than had we tried to come out and say, "We want these interchanges," and so forth. So, that's a major project that would go from Wentzville all the way across to Independence, across the state of Missouri, so that's one major project. Other projects in our Northeast District, listed on there would be two bridge replacements, one on Route D, just east of Martha'sville, right next to Warko, is a one-lane bridge. We would replace that. Another bridge replacement is on 94 over Coke Creek. The shaded blue lines are resurfacing projects that we would do. Currently, right now, those routes, Route D, Route O, Route B, Route W, Route A, uh, with our current funding, right now, all we can do is maintain it with our maintenance forces. With this additional three-quarter cent sales tax, we'd be able to resurface those roadways. Another project shown in Warren County is a little cross, which indicates that in that, on that particular project, we would be building a turn lane on Route M by Truesdale at Pinkney Street, because right now, the bus is trying to turn in there, there's quite a bit of traffic back up in that area, so we're trying to alleviate that. And there is a project, interchange project shown as a diamond. This is a draft list of projects, and to tell you right now, that is gonna be coming off the list. And the reason why that we're taking that off the list is with the design-build, we didn't wanna let the design-build contractors think that we've got funding right now to do something to improve the 4770 interchange. We wanna force them to try and deliver as much as they can for us. So, that's a reason when the final list comes out, you won't see a diamond on there. So, right now, this draft list is out for comment. You can go to our website at mo.org moving forward. You have till July 3rd. So far, we've received over 800 comments statewide in Missouri. After July 3rd, the comment period ends. Our Highway Commission will be reviewing all those comments. July 9th, we'll come out the final list of projects, so everybody can see that voting on this Amendment 7, these are the projects that would be built with those additional funds.
Realistically, though, there's a lot of projects. You're not gonna get all these projects built, so some of this is fluff.
All these projects will be constructed, because it's a three-quarter temporary 10-year project list, and if these projects aren't, aren't completed, there's no way the citizens of Missouri are gonna look at potentially passing another list of projects 10 years down the road. So, what we've got listed here, we have committed to completing. And it is a lot of projects, you are correct when you look at that. A lot of it is taking care of the system, bridge replacements, resurfacing, major interstate. But I understand what, I understand where you're coming from, but we are 100% committed to doing that. If you look at our record the last 10 years, we've completed close to $12 billion worth of... of projects, 95% completed on time, 5% under budget. So, the last 10 years, we've been working hard to deliver. And I know we can deliver these projects.
I, I guess I'm not a proponent for the tax increase, so, and it's not my place to sit here and argue against it. And one of my thoughts is, you know, I just don't see a whole lot of money coming into the Warrenton area off of these projects. You know, you can argue that a six-lane highway going across the state helps the city of Warrenton. You know, I think that's a...
I mean, that's, that's a determination, like you say, everybody's got to make. So, the one thing I did mention earlier is 5% would go to cities and counties. Right now, when I look at the city of Warrenton, I believe that out of fuel tax, sales tax, vehicle fees, you get about $283,000 a year. So, if this does pass, you would see an additional $53,800 a year that would come to the city of Warrenton, which you could use for any transportation need that, that you would see, see fit. Are there any other questions that...
I guess that what the public needs to know, these projects here, if this three-quarter sales tax does not pass, these are all scratched?
These are, yep.
That there won't be enough money to even look at a, one of those projects?
Right now, our current funding for the state of Missouri, we have about $700 million. In 2017, that funding goes down to $325 million. And 70% of our fuel tax, our, our revenue comes from the fuel tax. With more miles per gallon vehicles are driving and actually less people, people driving, that revenue is, is coming downhill. So, you are correct. It takes about $485 million to maintain our system at the current level. So, the future is, the revenues are going downward. So, what you see on this project list would not occur.
Is there an alternative to the three-quarter cent sales tax? I mean, if it doesn't pass, what, what's next?
If it doesn't pass, then it's, it's truly up to our legislators. I mean, this is something I know they've been working the last couple of years on. But it's up to our legislators to determine funding for Missouri Department of Transportation. So, if it wouldn't pass, then I would say it's back to the drawing board. And who knows when you could see something in the future.
And I, that, that probably makes this really uncomfortable. I mean, here you have a legislature this year that decided to potentially decrease the taxes on the wealthiest in the state, and yet charged a common person like you and I additional costs to drive. It's kind of a screwed up priority in my perspective.
And, and I try.
And you can't comment.
I try and stay away from.
I know.
Our, our task at hand was working with our partners to develop this list. And I'll let that other, I won't, I won't get into that stuff.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Menenga? On this side?
Nope.
Nope. Anything else?
No, I appreciate the time to, to visit with you. And if there are any questions, just please give me a holler and we'd be glad to help and answer them.
Thank you for coming and sharing that with us and bringing this up to date.
Alright.
I'm sure I'll be running into you again.
I'm sure. Alright, thank you.
Have a good evening. I'm on item 10, liquor license renewal for 2014, 2015. I thought we had all those done. We left one out, our late, late applicant. Any questions or concerns about, about the liquor license? If not, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the liquor license renewal application as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the liquor license as submitted. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absence. I have Public Works Director, Mr. Gabers, up.
How are you doing, Mayor?
Good.
First time I have is the bid tab for the tower painting. And the first bid tab is for Ashland Road. That's number four. We want to do this one this year. The, there's antennas on that tower that need to be addressed.
What does it cost, or how much does it add to cost to work around antennas on towers?
They will have to remove the towers, the antennas. And removal of the antenna is $5,500. A big part of the, the cost is they have to curtain, they got to cover the whole tower and sandblast it off. And then they have to remove the curtain and pick up all the debris that came off the tower.
The low bid is considerable more than what we budgeted.
Yes. Part, part of that issue is the curtaining of it and the lead base paint that's on it that needs to be removed.
Well, then the question, I guess, goes to Terry or Gabrielle. The balance of 800 or 600, $63,300? Is that the number I'm seeing? Will come out of unappropriated funds. How much unappropriated funds do we have this year in the budget?
We had about $148,000 if I remember correctly.
And this is unappropriated for the general fund or unappropriated simply for water?
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer. So, we're eating almost half of our unappropriated funds on this project?
Yes.
For a year-end...
The budget that we, you all just approved, ending June 2015.
Is there an alternative to painting these towers? Do we have a choice or an option?
Once, once we determine there's lead on it, then...
It has to be taken off.
Otherwise, you get, I guess, paint over it, but you're just creating other issues down the road. It's really not an option. So, we'd do well four first, and then well six in 2015.
Why isn't it an option just to paint over it?
Because the more paint you get buildup on it, then it won't... If paint builds up, then it starts flaking off. And if it starts flaking off, you get a brand-new tower on, so when a big section of it flakes off, then we got an issue.
So, I mean, so the reality is, is you're just, by painting over it, you're just not sealing the lead painted, and you have potential problems in the future.
Right.
So, are they going to take this, the tower down to bare metal?
Yes. And then reprime it and then paint it with an epoxy paint.
And how long does that last?
It's, I believe, I have to double-check. The engineers has the bids that, but I believe it's a 15-year warranty.
How, how many of our wells have lead-based paint on them?
I know of two.
Two?
I don't know about the other ones.
He's not looking.
So, do you have any other additional unappropriated funding issues that may come up in the next 12 months of the budget year?
I hope not.
I hope not.
So, you had said we, we'd do four and then wait on six?
Four, we can't do both at the same time. And it's whether has had a big part of it when we do it. With DNR, we just had an inspection from DNR and wanted a recommendation. And it's just a recommendation that we need to adjust the antennas coming down off the tower.
Why would you do four first instead of six?
Because four has the antennas on the, on the top of the tower. Those need, that needs to be addressed. We contacted the school and the weather band that our antennas are on, that have them on there. We sent them a letter and let them know ahead of time that this is the process that we're doing. I've been in contact with the school, and they got their company on hand to take care of their towers. As soon as we get our bids in from our engineer and proceed to move forward, then we'll contact them when our start date will be.
So, they'll, they'll take the antennas down and then put them back up?
Put them back up, correct. According to how we want the antennas put back. They need to be in conduit all the way coming down the side. They can't be hooked to a ladder because it's a safety issue climbing a ladder.
Whose antenna are they?
Uh, one of them is ours, one of them is the school's, and the other one belongs to a radio, weather radio band.
St. Charles.
St. Charles weather, weather radio band. And they all, I believe they have agreements with us, with the antennas. And then we have the Christmas decoration that's up there.
Are they paying to get their antennas removed?
They, they will have to take care of their antennas themselves.
So, again, and maybe this is a Terry question or Gabrielle question, but since this is the start of a budget year, why would you not, from a financial standpoint, do the project that has the smallest, smallest need for unappropriated funds? Because one has $18,300, one has $60-some thousand. Do you have a perspective from a financial...
From a financial perspective, I agree with you. From the perspective of, we have to have a response back to DNR from our water tower inspection that has to address this particular tower and the antenna situation. I think that's why it needs to be done first, so that we can address the DNR issue with the antenna situation.
So, the DNR issue is overriding the financial consideration?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we go with Maguire Iron for a total amount of $2,000, $65,000 for the preparation painting of well number four.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cassely, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the bid for Maguire Iron in the amount of $263,000. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absence. Emergency repairs to well number eight.
Do we want to do the well, well, uh...
Well, well six.
Well six, two? Do we get that approved?
The pricing from this vendor can tend, be contingent on both projects?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is the pricing contingent on both projects?
If we, if we get them approved tonight, yes.
So, he bid them as two projects, two wells, not separate?
Two, two separate projects, hoping that would, one, maybe one would come in less than the other one. That's why we did them separate, because we knew we had antenna, antenna issues on the other.
Are these both in the same budget year? I mean, one's going to be done this summer, one's going to be done next summer prior to June 30th?
Yes. And, and I don't believe that the two projects, that the pricing is contingent on each other. But in order to get this price in 2015, we have to award the contract now.
Okay. So, then you've eaten up $800,000 of your reserve.
Well, but remember, this is just the unappropriated number. We've still got somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000 that's left for potential new construction or some other. And we also have $100,000 in contingency. So, we do have a little bit of additional room there should something unforeseen happen.
Make a motion, we accept the bid on well number six in the amount of $225,000.
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dryer to approve the bid for Maguire Iron for well number six in the amount of $225,000. Any discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderman Cassely?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried five, zero with two absence. Okay.
Well eight, emergency.
Emergency, alright.
We had a, we had a call, Flynn Welding, I mean, Flynn Drilling. When the pump at a well kicks on and it fills the pipe up, the pipe stays charged with water, and there's a check valve, and it holds it there. Well, there was a leak in the pipe, and the water was leaking back down into the well. So, I called Flynn, and we took apart a piece of the pipe. When we took the piece of the pipe apart, no water came out. But that means it determined that we had a leak in the well. So, they would pull the pump, pull the well casing off the top, and start looking to see which piece was leaking. They charged us $3,750 to, to do that. Well, it was one of the top pieces that was leaking around a coupler. So, the total bill come out to be $4,655.14. And when it, with an air pocket, when a well kicks on, it pushes air through the system, and everything inside the wellhouse jumps. So, it was something that needed to be fixed right away.
That well's up, that well's up and running, functioning now?
It's running. And then the next, any questions? And then the next issue we had was a gearbox at the wastewater treatment plant. And that's what operates the ditch, the rotors in the ditch, that what I would call disintegrated. And we received three bids for that, and the lowest bid was $6,885. That was ordered, and it should be shipped, should be here sometime this week. And we removed that, and we'll install that ourselves.
Any questions for Guy?
No, no more.
Those, both of those were, were approved on an emergency situation. Something we, we didn't have time to bring it to the board. Something we had to be taking care of immediately. Anything else, Guy?
No, sir.
Okay.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
When's that start?
Friday.
Couple minutes?
Yeah.
Alright. Director of Operations, Finance Officer Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is just to let you know that we have scheduled a meeting, what we're calling the New Recreation Direction Meeting, for lack of appropriate terminology, I guess. Eric Schluter, as the Chair of the Recreation Committee, had requested that we schedule a meeting with the purpose of letting the public know what our plans are moving forward with our sports leagues, scheduled for next Tuesday, July 8th, at 6:30 here in the chamber. We have put up banners. I think if they're not today, they'll be up tomorrow. So, we ordered some banners. One to be put out at the complex so that everyone currently participating in the league will be able to see that. And then one on Highway 47. We also, in the letter that is accompanying the refunds that will go out tomorrow for the half of the registrations that you all approved for the leagues, invited all of those individuals to come to the meeting. Really, the purpose is not to as much discuss, again, all the problems that we've had in the past, because we certainly realize we've had some, but to allow the participants to visit with game time, ask those representatives questions about what they see as the league moving forward, and hopefully start to develop some positive communication so that the positives of the new program moving forward, the word will get out there about that. So, anyone who wants to attend certainly is welcome, particularly in the Recreation Committee. But Eric said he's comfortable handling that if someone else cannot be here. So, hopefully, we'll have a lot of attendees. It'll be the start to really putting the word out there about this new direction.
Any questions?
Okay. The only other thing I have for you this evening is just to let you know that under bills-to-ordinance, we do have three agreements with game time for this new recreation direction. One is a management fee, a management agreement, which is how we've come up with, actually, the city attorney has come up with, moving forward for them to manage the league sports. We are limited by the bonding documents and the way that that can be handled. And this is the appropriate mechanism to manage the sports leagues. And then there are two agreements that are use agreements, which are for the tournament play, one for 2014 and one for 2015. Those agreements are identical except for the periods that they cover. I'm sure Mr. Graville can answer any specific questions, since he had to draw those up basically from scratch. So, it's been quite a process to get through. The only piece that we still have remaining is I spoke with Sean Flynn of Gilmore Belt today. The only piece that we still have remaining is I spoke with Sean Flynn of Gilmore Belt today. We wanted to make sure that all of these documents were pertinent and were what we needed. He has said that they will take a look. If we actually need a legal opinion letter from the bond counsel, they will provide that for us. But he felt like it would not be an issue. But that's the last formal hurdle to be undertaken to get this thing finalized.
Any questions for Terry?
Well, does Counselor have an executive summary he wants to give us before we wait till we get the bills, particular ordinances?
Someone's staring at me. I contacted various cities to find out how many cities had done an agreement like this. One of the things we found initially when we looked at it is we have very strict restrictions that the IRS looks at, that you can't just rent out your field for private use to make money. You know, there's very specific exceptions. And we used our bond counsel from Gilmore Belt to kind of assist us with directing what type of agreements we can come up with. A lot of cities have done agreements where they've basically rented out their entire facility, but not a lot of cities have done league management agreements with a private company, which I actually think there's quite a good market for, because a lot of cities put a lot of money into that. So we tried to think of anything and everything that could possibly come up right into the agreement, write the appropriate indemnifications. We spent a lot of time kind of going through the insurance to make sure, since this is such a unique situation, that we have insurance that would cover the city if any, you know, any type of event could come up. Used some provisions out of our pool agreement, which is a management agreement, but a different concept. We used some provisions when we've rented the field out to Little League and we've also, you know, use agreements we've had for the fields out there. So I think kind of our Frankenstein agreement came together pretty nicely. And, you know, hopefully it works out well. If it doesn't, you know, we wrote it so that we can have a quick exit. If the situation doesn't work out, we can try to find a different way to manage our leagues. So I hope that it does work out, but if not, we've also learned that if it doesn't, you have to be able to kind of regroup and put something forward. I think Terry's gonna volunteer to manage the recreational leagues if it doesn't work out. Certain line, that's the extent of my executive.
Okay.
But I think working with them, they've been completely and totally open. We've had great discussions with them, and so I think the energy is really positive.
Any other questions, concerns? Anything else?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. I'm ready for Finance Manager Gabrielle Curry. Good evening, Gabrielle.
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month. This does include the refunds that Terry mentioned for half of the youth baseball, softball, T-ball registrations, which ended up being $11,130. So the amount that I am requesting approval for is $204,470.66.
You notice we're paying for the cost of material of the new gunfire range, is that in place?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw all those names. I didn't know we had that many employees. I was trying to figure out, who are we paying all this to? These are the refunds from the...
Yes.
kids that signed up and we reimburse them for part of their fees.
Correct.
Any other questions for the accounts payable? Need a motion?
Make a motion, we pay the account payable amount of $204,470.66.
Motion made by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $204,470.66. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absinthe. Monthly report.
Yes, attached is the monthly report for the month of May. If you guys have any questions. If not, that is all I have.
Mr. Ock, I know you've got a question.
No, I, I looked at quite a bit.
Got them all answered. Alderman Castily, any question? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're ready to convert some bills to ordinances if no one has any other issues or concerns. First bill this evening is bill number 44-14. Introduce bill number 44-14 for first reading.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Castily for first reading of bill number 44-14.
In ordinance amending section 700.120 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrton, Missouri, establishing rights for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrton.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number 44-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 44-14.
In ordinance amending section 700.120 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrton, Missouri, establishing rights for sewer service within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrton.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absinthe. Bill number 45-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 45-14.
Second. Motion by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number 45-14.
In ordinance amending section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrton.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number 45-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 45-14.
In ordinance amending section 705.210 of the Municipal Code of the City of Warrton, Missouri, establishing rates for the use and consumption of water within and outside the corporate limits of the City of Warrton.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absinthe. Bill number 46-14. Introduce bill number 46-14 for first reading.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Castily for first reading of bill number 46-14.
In ordinance standing next, 17.83 acres of an unincorporated area located at 267 Willow Road into the City of Warrton, Missouri, without further action.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number 46-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second reading, second and final reading and passage of bill number 46-14.
In ordinance standing next, 17.83 acres of an unincorporated area located at 267 Willow Road into the City of Warrton, Missouri, without further action.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absinthe. Bill number 47-14.
Before we do this, Bill, can somebody explain it to me? What are we doing?
It has to do with the citywide yard sale and allowing temporary signs to be put out for the citywide yard sale.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it didn't say city, I didn't see citywide yard sale, sorry.
I'll call for the first reading of bill number 47-14.
Second. Motion by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Ock for first reading of bill number 47-14.
In ordinance of the City of Warrton, Missouri, approving a 24-hour moratorium on the enforcement of sign regulations under section 425.0901 of the City's Municipal Code.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number 47-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 47-14.
In ordinance of the City of Warrton, Missouri, approving a 24-hour moratorium on the enforcement of sign regulations under section 425.0901 of the City's Municipal Code.
Roll call, please.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absinthe. Bill number 48-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 48-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Hawley, seconded by Alderman Dryer for first reading of bill number 48-14.
In ordinance, authorize the mayor to sign a recreational league management agreement between the City of Warrton, Missouri and Game Time tournaments.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number 48-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 48-14.
In ordinance, authorize the mayor to sign a recreational league management agreement between the City of Warrton, Missouri and Game Time tournaments.
Do you have a question?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absinthe. Bill number 49-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 49-14. Second.
Motion by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Hawley for first reading of bill number 49-14.
In ordinance, authorize the mayor to sign in 2014 Athletic Complex Use Agreement between the City of Warrton, Missouri and Game Time tournaments.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number 49-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 49-14.
In ordinance, authorize the mayor to sign in 2014 Athletic Complex Use Agreement between the City of Warrton, Missouri and Game Time tournaments.
Roll call, please.
Got a question? Does this mean as practical matter that if somebody were to call up and want to use the fields, that that decision is solely in game times? Let's go backwards, take a scenario. If American League wanted to give more games, so there's a specific thing they control in terms of when they get use of the field, but we still have discretion for other things that don't conflict with this?
Yes, they have to provide us at the beginning with their list of dates. And the only thing this guarantees is those 15 dates that they're holding. Any other dates would be subject to us being able to rent the fields to someone else for any other purpose.
So we're not sacrificing any potential revenue, quote-unquote, for the other use of the fields? Okay.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alda, Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absinthe. Bill number 50-14. Introduce bill number 50-14 for first reading.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Hawley for first reading of bill number 50-14.
In ordinance, authorize the mayor to sign in 2015 Athletic Complex Use Agreement between the City of Warrton, Missouri and Game Time tournaments.
Call for a second final reading and passage of bill number 50-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dryer, seconded by Alderman Hawley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 50-14.
In ordinance, authorize the mayor to sign in 2015 Athletic Complex Use Agreement between the City of Warrton, Missouri and Game Time tournaments.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alda Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero, two absinthe. Motion for adjournment?
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Dryer to adjourn. All others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those likewise, word adjourned.
Motion to allow Alderman Castily to gratification.
Yeah.
She's gonna be right behind Guy.